Seven o'clock, Monday, September 10th, 2018, and I call the regular meeting of Waverly City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Drinkow.
Present.
Angus.
Present.
McKenzie.
Present.
Rothie.
Present.
Chair.
Present.
And Waldstein is absent.
Yes. If you would all stay and rise and join me in the fudge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is I would entertain a motion to approve agendas.
I will move the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Agenda is approved. Next item is approve the August 16th, August 17th, and August 18th, 2018 strategic planning session minutes, the 2020th, 2018 regular meeting minutes, and the August 27th, 2018 study session minutes. To entertain a motion.
Move approval of the minutes?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Minutes, all minutes are approved. Ann Rothie, would you introduce the guest councilperson for September?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So our guest councilperson is Lynn Wingo. Lynn is a coworker of mine up at the hospital, and whenever anyone asks me questions about city government, I put them on my list of people to invite to be guest city council people. So I'll let him tell you a little bit about himself.
Well, good evening, everyone. I've been a resident of Waverly for about five years or so, formerly of Chicago, and I have an eight-year-old son, Kayden, goes to school here in St. Paul. I must say that I could not ask for a better environment, a better town, to raise my son in. Waverly is just a very wonderful city. I'm very happy to be a part of it. Certainly, compared to Chicago, the traffic's a lot less, even with how things are now. The only difference is, is that Election Day, we can only vote once here, but I've gotten used to that. Nonetheless, thank you, everyone, for having me here tonight. Thank you.
Welcome, Lynn, to the council. And if Ann didn't explain, I will, that you have all rights of discussion. The only thing that we ask that you can't take part in or don't take part in is the actual vote. Other than that, feel free to raise your hand, jump in at any time, and let us know what's going on. Very good. Thank you. Next item is a presentation of a plaque of appreciation to former Airport Commission member Von Blunt, and I've asked Mr. Bronner to do the honors this evening.
Sir. Von, it's my honor, on behalf of Mayor Solace, City Council, and the city of Waverly, present you this certificate for your service on the Airport Commission. True to appreciate it.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to be here in the city of Haddon, the council. I really appreciate it. How long has this been? Thank you. Public comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that has something they would like to impart to us?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Matthew Snyder, Waverly resident, Ward 5. I did email my councilperson, as well as the mayor, on this topic regarding some serious flaws in the data used to determine the road diet feasibility that the DOT signed off on. I'm not prepared to talk about that this evening, but I do hope that we can bring that up in conversation before that road gets striped. I did want to talk about something that was maybe a little more timely, and that is special events as it relates to three-lane configuration, since we just had the firemen's convention, which wasn't, I don't think, a huge number, but was a number nonetheless, that may give us an idea of what happens on side streets and things like that. So I had a lot of case studies on this, and the one I chose was because I had a newspaper article on it, in this town called Seaside, Oregon. ADTs are 15,300, which is comparable to Waverly, and I know the DOT will argue with me that it's a 12-8 road, but that is a suppressed number because of construction. Breamer Avenue's always been a 15,000 road, but ADT at Seaside, 15,300, and they have this relay, every annual relay. They'd always been doing 1,000 teams. Well, they really wanted to get after it this year, so they decided to do 300, 250 or 300 more teams. It's 250 more teams. They had 1,250 teams. So it was that increase in the teams, but also weather had played a factor in what I'm about to describe. And then there was also a communication issue in this town where they said, "Go here," and they were supposed to go here, so it probably increased traffic on that mistake as well. But the conditions that hap-- so what, this is a three-lane road, there's no other way in or out of the town, same exact configuration that's proposed here in Waverly and that is passed. During the relay, the police chief said that the road had reached saturation between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, and it took, they got a ton of complaints. It took drivers 90 minutes to two hours to go from the south side of the city to the north side. So about two miles an hour is what traffic was moving through the corridor on the three-lane. Traffic was at a standstill on 12th and Wahana, was backed up as far as they could see. Downtown was bumper-to-bumper. Their downtown is not on this corridor. It's, sits about two or three blocks to the west of the corridor. The police chief said the town was basically overwhelmed. What they do during special events is the police, they use motorcycles to get in and out of downtown when it's congested like that. And if a major emergency had occurred, the police chief said the fire department and emergency personnel would have known which routes to take. That's the point, I just wanted to make one final point on that particular. So the reason they're taking alternate routes is because their most preferred route, which is the fastest route, is no longer needed. So I really want us to seriously think about the public safety issue that we are going to place ourselves into, and, you know, as I said a couple meetings ago, we just don't have a good understanding of how level of service affects emergency response time, and that's why I've reached out to state officials and am seeking a moratorium on all road diets when emergency response time comes into question by local officials. And, you know, until we have a better understanding of that, I seriously think it's a bad decision. So I do thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Anything they'd like to say? We'll move on to the consent calendar. It consists of 13 separate items. Pay request from AHTS Architects for the Waverly South Side Park Master Plan for $3,000. Pay request from Stanley Consultants, Incorporated, for the Cedar River Parkway Phase II Final Design for the amount of $15,197. Pay request from Stanley Consultants, Incorporated, for the Cedar River Parkway Construction Services for the amount of $98,035.9. Pay request from Kramer &amp; Associates, Incorporated, for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 for the amount of $172,023.11. Pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the 20th Street Northwest Reconstruction Project for the amount of $7,334.56. Pay request from Kroll, Incorporated, for the 20th Street Northwest Reconstruction Railroad Crossing Improvements at 20th Street and Fifth Avenue Northwest Project 2018 for the Pay request from Chicago Central and Pacific for the 20th Street Northwest Reconstruction Railroad Crossing Improvements at 20th Street and Fifth Avenue Northwest Project 2018 for the amount of $16,262.98. Pay request from Blacktop Service Company for the 2018 Batumina Seal Coat Program for the amount of $176,618.69. Pay request from Central Tank Coatings for the West Water Tower riser repairs for the amount of $13,700. Pay request from Waverly Real Estate, LLC, for the remaining reimbursement balance for the public infrastructure in High Point Second Edition for the amount of $6,475.46. Approved purchase of three traffic signal vehicle detection cameras from Central Traffic Controls of Spencer, Iowa, for the quoted amount of $53,553, or $550. A special Class C liquor license for the Waverly Oktoberfest, and a change of ownership for Fairway Stores, Incorporated, Number 561. I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Regular Business Resolution 18-129, a resolution approving the Breamer County Fair Lease Agreement effective March 1st, 2019 to February 28th, 2020. To entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-129, a resolution approving a one-year contract extension effective March 1, 2019, through February 28, 2020, with the Breamer County Fair Association to lease the property, commonly known as Memorial Fairgrounds Park, to accommodate the 2019 Breamer County Fair event.
Second. Motion made, second. Council discussion.
My only question is, do they want it February 28th or February 29th?
Apparently whatever was grown up.
Suppose it doesn't matter, but...
They said one year, not one year and one day, so I'm holding it one year.
Okay. I mean, the question is if, if they're gonna have somewhere else starting on March 1st, 2020, what are they gonna do with their stuff that day? But I don't, I don't know if they've got the stuff to move.
Since it's a summer fair, I think we'll adjust. We won't kick them out in that one day. We'll make that adjustment. If you would like to have it the 29th, council, we can make the adjustment and move forward.
Any other discussion?
I think we've discussed this before, but they're aware of plans to start working on Fourth Street, and that the east entrance may not be available to them.
We've had that discussion, and depending on the timing, and, you know, funding and DOT, and it's very possible it's gonna happen. They're aware of that, and if it's not 19, it'll be 20. It's, yeah, it could pose a problem, and I think they're aware, and hopefully they'll have some backup plans if it does occur, but we'll keep them in the loop going forward as quickly as we can, once we figure out the timeframe.
Hopefully, they'll continue to allow Heritage Days to hold their festival there. There were some problems with that this past summer, so I'm hoping that they will extend the rental of those buildings.
I would agree, and we can certainly discuss that with them.
Well, it seems pretty clear that the intent of the fair is to eventually get to be at the site of Champion's Ridge. I guess, just from my understanding, and I'm not suggesting this would happen, but if the funding doesn't come through for Champion's Ridge, will the fair still likely locate in their portion of that space?
I believe so. I mean, they've purchased the ground, for the most part. We still have not issued the deed until, of course, the lease is completed or executed, and I think that is in the intent. At some point, they will end up at that area. I think they're waiting here to see when that's going to occur, because if perhaps the funding does not come through, we will know that by the end of the year roughly or so, and to have that quick turnaround to try and start moving would not be conducive. So they wanted to look at a year-by-year lease until they can figure out exactly when that timeframe will happen, to make that move, and so this is the first step in that happening, and, but that is the goal, is to eventually be out there one way or another.
Any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 18-131, a resolution accepting the 2018 Batumina Seal Coat Program as complete and approving change order number one and final pay request to Blacktop Services Company of Humboldt, Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I'll move Resolution 18-131, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Motion.
Resolution carried. Resolution 18-131, a resolution accepting the 2018 Batumina Seal Coat Program as complete and approving change order number one and final pay request to Blacktop Services Company of Humboldt, Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I'll move Resolution 18-131, a resolution accepting the 2018 Batumina Seal Program, Seal Coat Program as complete and approving change order number one for the final adjustment of quantities in the amount of $1,845.41 increase, and a final pay request in the amount of $9,295.72 to Blacktop Services Company of Humboldt, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Resolution 18-131 carried. Resolution 18-132, a resolution approving the contract with Iowa Appraisal and Research Corporation of Des Moines, Iowa, for appraisal of property for acquisition for the Airport Safety Zone Project. To entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 18-132, a resolution approving a contract with Iowa Appraisal and Research Corporation of Des Moines, Iowa, for appraisal of property for acquisition for the Airport Safety Zone Project for the estimated cost of not to exceed $3,500.
Second. Made, second. Council discussion.
I just wondered if we could see this on a map. That'd be helpful.
This would be the, this would be the original plat that was done, and all of the acquisitions have been made, except the Schmidt property, which is right there under my finger. The green area over here on Barstool 9 is a little bit different configuration because we adjusted the lines through a new plating process, but I didn't have a picture of the whole thing. So everything else would be acquired, except for the Schmidt property. It's in blue because the original parcel was designated to be an easement. We offered to do an easement. What it meant, there were, no buildings would be removed, but there was, most of the trees would be removed from that section, and because of that, the Schmitz did not want to give us an easement, and the FAA will not let us condemn an easement. If we have to do any condemnation, it would have to be an acquisition. So therefore, we still offer the easement, but if the easement isn't acceptable voluntarily, then we move to the acquisition process.
Any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Motion, Resolution 18-132 carried. Resolution 18-133, a resolution approving the contract with A&amp;R Services, Incorporated, of Ames, Iowa, for assistance with relocation services in acquiring property for the Airport Safety Zone Project. Entertain a motion.
I move Resolution 18-133, a resolution approving a contract with A&amp;R Services, Inc., of Ames, Iowa, for assistance with relocation services in acquiring property for the Airport Safety Zone Project for the estimated cost of not to exceed $6,000.
Second. Motion made, second. Council discussion.
Maybe Bill or James, if you could give us some details about what this process entails.
Relocation, whenever you remove, when you do an acquisition that will remove somebody from their home, you have to offer them relocation services, and what that does is, that company will actually go in and find replacement properties within a certain area around that parcel, and if they find one that is more than the appraisal of the property, but it's similar to that property, they'll raise the amount of the award, the acquisition amount, to the value of the comparable property. So when we did this previously, that actually increased the amount that we offered over the fair market value established by the appraisal. In addition, there was, I think, $10,900 of relocation costs that were awarded, or that were potentially awarded. There could have been some business relocation done, but they, they didn't provide enough documentation for the FAA to approve any business relocation. And so those are all offered to the, to the property owner, and they can decide whether or not they accept that process. If, if we agree to something more than that, obviously, it doesn't have to be, we don't have to use that process, and, but at this point, it's, it makes it fair, because sometimes they identify replacement properties and things that are acceptable to them, and even if they're more than the appraised value, then they would be offered that ability to buy those properties.
Forgive me, did you say this is a state law or an FAA?
It's a federal, well, it's a, the FAA requires the relocation in their processes. Yeah.
Did you have any idea what the holdup was? What the other, I mean, it's a difficult thing, obviously, to, to do something like and have this done to you, but was there something that got in the way of doing it the original way you wanted to do it?
You mean, as far as doing the appraisal, or doing the easement?
Yeah.
Well, the, I mean, they just didn't want to do an easement because they didn't want to remove all the trees to the south of the property, or the south of the buildings, even though the, the, some of the trees on, beside the house, and all of the trees to the north of the house would remain, it's just the ones that are in the safety zone. And they would, they would be able to keep the buildings that are in place. If they, if they lost those buildings to fire or something, then they wouldn't be able to rebuild, but it's just a restriction. Those buildings would stay in place, the outbuildings.
Basically, the trees that were the kind of sound buffer between them and the airport, they would lose.
Yes.
So...
Yes. And the reason we're doing it now, after waiting and not doing it previously, is because they really didn't need to do it until the extension, because now they, once they get the extension done, they will want to do a GPS mapping, and that includes the safety zone, and they'll have to know that they're in a, they won't want trees within that safety zone, so they can map that area.
Any other discussion, questions?
Not that it, not that it really makes much difference to what we're gonna decide, but how many trees are we talking about?
57 trees were identified to be removed. Now, some of those are, tree heights were, yeah, they're all, a lot of those are in the twenties, there's some in forties, and there's some very healthy substantial trees out there in that area.
So we're not in danger of losing our designation as a tree city if we do this, right?
No. I, I think it's the idea that the FAA wants to make our general aviation airports as safe as possible, and one of those is by making sure that we don't have narrow airspace above our runways.
I'm sure we have to do it. I just hate to see the trees go.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 18-133 carried. Resolution 18-134, a resolution approving contract modifications number one through five for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 project. Motion, please.
I will move Resolution 18-134, a resolution approving contract modifications number one of a $960 increase, number two of a $638.40 increase, number three of a $17,245 increase, number four of a decrease, thank you, number four, a $1,113.50 decrease, and number five of a $322,046.40 decrease, all to Kramer &amp; Associates of Grimes, Iowa, for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 project.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
It's refreshing to be able to vote on a resolution where we're saving some money.
Yes.
Substantial amount of money, it appears. Mike, do you have some?
You know, James is probably going, "Don't get up, don't get up," but I think that this is...
You think it's worthwhile, by all means?
I was kind of hoping he'd be too tired after all that happened yesterday.
I'll make it brief, but I think this is an opportunity to kind of explain Bridge Design 101.
I think it'd be good to outline what each of these are as we go forward, when you see the amounts, that's one thing, but to know why it was decreased or increased in others, so I think it'd be good to run through that.
Yeah. Modifications, they're basically change orders, and one through four are, are, you know, basically field adjustments, or they're by contract. So, like, the splicing of the piles, that's, that's actually already in the contract, that if, if this is what you encounter, then you have to splice them, then they're going to get paid extra. So this is just kind of acknowledging that. Same thing with the cold-weather protection for the concrete. Other ones are kind of miscellaneous field adjustments that were done, and those are things that we usually clean up at the end, and I kind of, with our consultant at a timeout, we're not going to do one of these every time we do a pay application, because otherwise we'd have like 50 of them. And these are all very common adjustments that are made. You know, maybe you shorten the length of a culvert by one pipe length, okay? That doesn't really warrant an immediate change order. It's a work order that you acknowledge in the field, contractor, engineer, everyone agrees to it. But let's get to the big one, the $322,000 deductible, and this has to do with the design of the bridge footings, and some assumptions that are made during the design. We, we... As engineers, we try to gather within a reasonable cost, try to determine like what the geology is of the ground underneath. And so I think I put this in your agenda packet. I think this is a really good illustration of what we're talking about. And we build these things from the ground up. We take core samples of the soil and underlying bedrock, and we do it where each one of these piers is going to be built, the bridge abutments and the pier. In order to be able to support the bridge and support the vehicles, we start from driving piles, then you have a pile cap, then you have your pier, and then a pier cap, and then your bridge beams. So those are the fundamental elements of the bridge. What came into issue was the stability of the bedrock and the ground underneath. And on three of the five piers, it was kind of iffy whether they would be able to drive piling to an appropriate depth. If it was too hard, then they were going to have to, because, let's say there was really hard rock, they were going to have to core a rock socket. And this was going to get very complicated and very costly in order to build the cofferdam in order to get the machinery down in there to de-water the site and to drill these. And they made a decision that, you know, we could get more information, we could drive piles, but that was going to involve basically bringing cranes and equipment on-site, building a cofferdam and stuff to be able to get the cranes out there to drive these test pilings out in the middle of the river. In lieu of doing that, the decision was made to kind of assume the worst-case scenario that we were going to have to drill these rock sockets. And it was going to be, you know, we're going to err on the cautious, careful side. And if we were able to, if the test piles that we were able to drive, once the contractor was on-site, if we were able to get the load bearing in the depth of drive that we were looking for, it was actually built right into the contract that we would pay for it as regular pile driving. And that's what happened. If we were to have started with, let's just say, we're going to be able to drive the pile, and then you get out there and you determine you can't, instead of a $300,000 deduct, the change order would probably be 50% more or 100% more than that. So instead of having, you know, deduct, you'd be having, adding potentially $450,000, $500,000, $600,000 onto the contract. So it's never a good situation to be in with the community. And so, again, like I said, the decision was made to err on the careful side and assume that we may have to drill rock sockets in order to support the bridge. Does that inspire any questions?
Believe it or not, I actually understand that.
Okay. Excellent.
I do have just one question, and I wasn't going to bring this up, but since we have time to kill, I'm going to anyway.
We do?
The $600, minor issue there about the cold weather concrete covering. But where are they at? I mean, is that because they are behind and they're going to have to pour in concrete in weather that they didn't think they were going to have to pour it in?
No, that was work that was being done back in April. And it wasn't for the work that was done in March, because they chose to start early before April 1st. And so any cold weather protection prior to April 1st was at their expense. Once we get into the normal construction season, which is considered April through the end of October, if there is a situation where they have to protect the concrete, then there are contract provisions where the agency covers that cost. Now, if they choose to continue work into November, that cold weather protection will once again be at their cost. Okay? So that, yeah, this was some cold weather that we had in April. You know, we had a very, very long winter that drug out. Otherwise, got some pictures here. These are, one of my employees has a drone, and he brought that in, and doesn't show up really well here. But there are three tractor-trailer units with the beams on. And we can pass this around. But each one of these beams is 136 feet long. With the truck unit, it's pushing 170 feet in length. And so they were lined up on the parkway. Here you can see where the truck is driving the beam down. And then here we've got, again, two of the cranes that lifted off the truck and positioned it and placed it between the, this is on the west side of the river. This is the first span. What I want to point out here, and again, I'll pass this around, because this doesn't show up really well on the screen here. But these trucks, they have, and I apologize, because it doesn't show up really well. There, you can start to see it. They have a barge that they will deploy all the way across the river. Now, right now, the river's up pretty high. But what they're going to do in order to place these other spans is this barge becomes a floating bridge, and they will drive the trucks clear across the river on this barge. And they will have cranes that, again, lift them off and place them. And for the middle span of the river, they'll have cranes on both sides that are doing this. So pass that one around.
So does all activity in the engineer's office stop so you can go watch all this and take a video for us or something?
It actually goes quite quickly. It only takes, once the trucks show up and they have everything ready, I don't even know if it's an hour per beam for them to set and place. They know what they're doing. They've done this a thousand times before. But for us, it's kind of a once-in-a-career opportunity to see this. So again, we're taking some drone footage of that, and it's, I think it's being placed online so that other people can view it as well. Again, you don't, there's not a whole lot of fast action, so the drone doesn't really do it justice, but you get some great pictures to see.
Now, are we starting at the west end and moving to the east end? Or are we starting in the middle and working in the other direction? Where are we putting these beams?
Well, right now, it's on, they did the west span, because the river came up, and so, you know, everything is identical, so they just...
Right. They can go anywhere they need to. Interchangeable. Okay.
Okay. Very good. Mike, thank you for the update on the bridge construction. That was quite interesting. Any other questions on Resolution 18-134? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Green Cow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Resolution 18-134 carried. Reports from boards and commissions, Historic Preservation Commission minutes, June 25, 2018.
I noticed in the reading of the minutes that there may be a tiny little stumble there. There's reference to the Green Bridge being in northeast Waverly, I think they mean southeast.
Southeast, okay. Any other comments? Received into record, Economic Commission minutes, July 10, 2018. Received into record, 12th Commission minutes, August 14, 2018. Received into record. Time for staff comments.
I don't believe we have any, sir.
Okay. City council comments?
I'll be at the poorhouse after council meeting if anyone wants to share a beverage.
Okay.
I would like to congratulate Mike Cherry on completing still another Ironman. I think it was in Madison, was it?
I traveled last week to Virginia and West Virginia. And since other people have shared their three-lane, four-lane vacation experiences, I'll share mine. Saw many roundabouts in Virginia, all of which worked fine, and traveled on a lot of three-lane roads with center-designated turning roads, most of which were on windy West Virginia state highways and some national highways. And I didn't see a single traffic jam. So just thought I'd mention that.
Very good. Any other council comments? Lynn, do you have anything at this point?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Very good. Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the Waverly Firefighters Association, firemen for, in spite of the weather, a pretty successful 140th convention. It was tough. And the pictures that I saw on the correspondence that I had with my son and grandson, who are both on the department, showed distress, but also they were glad with every little victory that came along. Had the privilege of speaking to the fire convention Friday evening for a few minutes. It was an upbeat crowd. The band was going great, and they were having fun. And leave everything as in order. Now, when it comes time for restoration, the neighborhood people, as Chief Hopple had referred to, collected cans and garbage. They have what is referred to probably one and a half box trucks full of cans. And between the departments, they collected over 800 pounds of can tabs. And if you think how many cans that takes to make a pound, you can see why there's a couple of box trucks and a half. And also, to show the various departments, to show their appreciation to the community and to the neighbors in particular out there for their cooperation and assistance, donated about $1,000 to their new shelter project for, in their little neighborhood park. So all in all, it was a very successful convention. And I understand the competition went well. The biggest highlight of the parade apparently was the four tractors at the end that were still covered with mud.
Oh.
And so that's all I have. I think we're pretty, entertain a motion for adjournment.
I was going to say, Mayor, if I could, just real quick, I'm sure Chief Hopple will come in at an appropriate time and give us an update, but just, again, to give people insight into it, I think over the four days, five days that it rained here in Waverly, we were pushing 10 to 12 inches of rain. And I was right in the middle of trying to get about 600 campers into the 44-acre campground. At one point, I believe we had 10 tractors pulling people in from the street. The field was so muddy that they couldn't even drive off of the concrete or asphalt roads. So it was very challenging, but no accidents, no damage to vehicles, other than maybe a scratch here or there. And by Friday, on Thursday afternoon, when the sun came out, moods improved. And as the mayor said, they were a very appreciative group. And, yeah, it was just a good time by the time the weekend got here and the sun was here. And hopefully, those in the community that were inconvenienced by the traffic in their neighborhoods, those type of things, understand that. From every indication, talking to people, they were treated very well in the community and enjoyed Waverly. And Waverly hasn't been invited to go around the state to any place that there's a drought and hold conventions. I'm sure Chief Hopple will give more numbers and that type of information later.
Okay. Any other quick comments from anyone? Thank you all for coming. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Is it we adjourn?
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.